Get it out of the way now and then.
I think we just got it.
She wasn't here today, was she?
No, she was, but we just got that this morning.
All right, good enough.
Good evening, everyone. I will call the meeting of the Breezy Point Planning Commission to order and ask for approval of the April 12, 2016 nets.
I will mostly be approved as drafted.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of those nets?
I just had one comment on the portable sawmill. I thought that Jerry had told us about it, but I didn't think that we had really discussed it very long or decided that, you know, and this is the commission was not open to the idea.
The consensus I got that evening was that that wasn't something the commission really wanted to pursue, and the message I gave the gentleman was that that was something that was not conducive to being in the neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood, in that, and he was okay with that.
Okay, because I felt like we needed a little more information because, you know, if it was going to be a one-day thing or a two-week thing.
And I think, I think had he pursued it further or wanted to pursue it further, he would have been in front of you talking about it. It would have probably gone on for an extended amount of time before it got resolved, but he just, he understood.
Okay.
Any other discussion of those notes? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. We will then move to the City Council liaison report. Councilman Bachan, would you?
Would you give me five minutes to digest this from Councilor Schmidt? I didn't see this. No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, okay.
I'll read it while you guys are debating, and I know the jux of this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number one, just a quick report on the fly-in. Second, Breezy Point Aviation Days, oblique stroke, fly-in. That's what the aviators call it, fly-in. And it was hugely successful again, better than last year, and that's remarkable. And in my history, and I'm sure Cliff Mueller's, never has the city been so successful with the fly-in. It takes a long time to build that up. Weather was not the best. It was sunny, but there was a heck of a wind blowing, but we were very lucky there. It was a straight down-the-rungway wind, so no crosswinds and every, couple cancellations and everybody full in. Two jets this time. The kids' eyeballs were walking around like this. Commander sold 500, not hot dogs, but brats in, Cliff at the time, it was a ridiculous number. I was there twice, earlier in the morning, and then I came back at 1:30, and the line was still out to the roadway to get the free food. So, and I'd like to just acknowledge Narverson's contribution, also the resorts, in putting the air traffic controller up for the weekend in their space. So, thank you to all you guys. Now, we'll move to the council meeting and what notes I have, and I'm going to be very brief. I think most of you have got at least a heads-up on this. Number one, the trailer's finger-hut down the road. Define outside storage. Review, and I, this is, this is the juggernaut, if you will, review animal husbandry ordinance, the units, the permits, areas approved, and I was remark, I'm remarking to Mr. Landecker here on, I, on three planning commissions. When I, the first planning commission I was on, this particular document and those numbers were there, and I looked at that, and one eyeball went this way and the other one went that way. And I was to call David to get his slide rule out, but he was too busy working for his dad at that time. So, it's puzzling, it's very, very confusing, and I think, just to encapsulate it, I think the council's request is for the P and Z to review that ordinance. I'm not going to use the word tweak. Perhaps rewrite the whole thing to make it more user-friendly, and as far as those units go, that's, that's got to go. You know what? You can have three chickens, or four ducks, or five geese, whatever, and get that straightened out. Anything that you have to say, Jones, that I covered all?
Yeah, not counting. Conferents' plan was, I don't have a light, but Conferents' plan and then also the public access.
Access?
Public access.
Thank you. I have nothing else.
Gary, am I correct, the council did not take action on the conditional use permit?
No. No, no, there were some suggestions, and thank you for asking that. That rekindles a little input I'd like to give as quick as I can. Personally, and speaking only for myself, I think the planning commission did an excellent job on controlling what they wanted, and the applicants were helpful with that information coming to this body for them to make what I think was a very, very good decision, given all the circumstances, lot size, et cetera, et cetera, and the control of it. End of story there. Conditional use permits and interim use permits are a wonderful tool, and a good example of them was what this body did for those people that wanted to have a few sheep. A statement was made, I believe, at the council meeting passed, that a, and I, in fact, I know it was, a conditional use permit is not permanent per se. It runs with the land, but it can be rescinded if the conditions of that are violated. So, it is not a permanent fixture. Interim use permit, and if the administrator would like to elaborate, and that he gave me a real good education the other day, perhaps may fit these situations better. I can't make the decision about that. They run for a year, they run for three years, they run for X amount of years, and at that time, then Jerry or the city gets to run out there and check and make sure they're being complied with. And if a complaint comes forward, just like with the CUP, now, you guys can take action. So, they're a very useful tool, and I have nothing else to add unless.
Jerry, did you?
Just to add to confusion more than anything else, but back in yesteryear, additional use permits, variances, whatever, you used to get a public hearing from the planning commission, and then it was forwarded to the city council for confirmation and/or rejection or whatever. The rules changed a little bit, probably 10 years ago, and maybe I'm a little bit lax in the 10 years ago, but the, the planning commission became the board of adjustment and the planning commission, and the board of adjustment actually has final say on conditional uses and variances. They do not go to the council for recommendations, and I think that was done by state statute to take some of the politics out of some of those decisions. Whether that works or not, I don't know, but that is the situation that we're working under today. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that with the next issue and the, as far as confusion.
Thank you, Gary. Larry?
I have one time. I want to thank Gary for bringing it up because after, I was somewhat offended by the auto memo, and frankly, then I kind of looked at and re-looked at everything that we did, and I think we did everything absolutely correct. I thought we did it with enough information, and I think that you guys provided us what we needed to make that decision, and having had this memo or not, we would, I don't think we would have come to any different decision, because we were thorough on it, we made some conditions, and thank you for noting that, Gary, because I think we need to hear that kind of stuff, too. We don't need to just be looked at as we, we missed something, because I don't think we missed a thing.
You didn't.
Thank you.
That, that conclude your report here?
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. Long enough.
Thank you very much. Are there any other, is there any other discussion or questions of Gary? Good. Thank you. We will then move to open forum number one. Would anyone like to speak during open forum number one? Jeff? You know the drill, Jeff.
Jeff Johnson, representing White Birch. I just wanted to stop in and let you know, if you haven't been down on Airport Road, we did get in, I think it's 30 trees, 10-foot tall. The fence got put on the back, and I'm not sure if they got to it yet or not, but the gate was not put on for the dumpster or on the back yet, so we're getting very close. But I wanted to let you know that the trees did get done. We put in 30 10-foot trees, and then I think they said they left two of the jackpine that had been put in previously, that we didn't need that spot. So, there is still two of those, technically, there's 32, but it's 30 10-foot trees there. So, I just wanted you guys to know that. And at some point, I'll get with Jerry, once we get the gates done, and I'll meet with him, and we'll walk through that and try and get that thing wrapped up. So, thank you.
Any questions, Jeff? Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else? If not, we'll close open forum number one and move to a public hearing to consider conditional use application 2016-02 pine unit development preliminary plat Deacons Lodge, second edition, Arnold Palmer Drive, vacation rentals. We will open the public hearing, and we're going to do this a little bit differently tonight. We're going to ask the applicant, which I assume is David, to do a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning commission, staff, public. My name is David Landecker. I'm with Wink Associates, and I'm here tonight representing White Birch in regards to Deacons Lodge, second edition. And as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, and Jerry alluded to, there's several moving parts here as it relates to your ordinance, a conditional use permit, a preliminary plat, and actually planning of development. So, there's sort of three things, but in a sense, wrapped up in one package. So, the presentation is going to kind of address the whole thing, all the pieces, and as you have questions, feel free to stop me. We can go back on slides or whatever if you say, hey, let's go back and talk about this particular matter. We can, we can do that. But I sort of put the symbol of the slides to coincide with Jerry's report to you, the staff report. He was so kindly to provide me a copy of, and so I kind of took an opportunity to, to develop this, both in conjunction with our application and presentation, as well as staff comments. So, with that, I will proceed. First picture here is, I'm just kind of highlighting where in the city this actually is, and a little circle around the project area on the county map where the parcels are located. Second one is, is again the same area, so, but just south of Lynch Lake, there's a note there that says project area, and it's red, I mean, it indicates that it, the property is zoned resort commercial, so it's set up for the rental, rental uses of the cottages that we're looking at building here. So, that's kind of your zoning map. Next one is the aerial photo. Again, it's sort of indicates in red where the boundaries of the project is, and then generally where it's located within the city, as it reflects adjacent golf course properties, et cetera. And then this is the preliminary plat. So, we submitted this to you last month and just gave you kind of a brief introduction. Not much has changed since that introduction. I'm indicating this because it, as you'll see in Jerry's report, staff comments, as well as conditions, over 50% of the property should remain in green space. Currently, the count on that's about 80%. So, once we strip out the lots, these are little lots, they're blown up here, these lots will be conveyed to individuals, and then the balance of the property, which is called Lot 11, will have about 80%, so it exceeds the green space requirement for planning developments. Not exceeding 25% impervious coverage. Our count, if you were to look at the map, that mathematics shows up here. It currently is at 23%, so we're under the count. And again, it's sort of a backspace of what's green space. So, if we take the parking areas out, the buildings, sidewalks, anything that might be impervious, we need to be under the 25%. And again, as shown, that should not be a concern. Again, in the, some of the conditions, typical, or parking should be paved, and we're showing 68 spaces, or six designated areas, as I've got them starred here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, with a total of 68 spaces. And as you, again, go through the report, the numbers, the recommended numbers based on the ordinance requirements would, would indicate that that number should be 110 spaces, so we're, we're short of the 110 on the site. This would become, this is the preliminary plat that you're looking at here, so from the standpoint of what part of the application or submission that we're looking at, this is the preliminary plat. Once it becomes final, it will simply be a boundary of this configuration with the designated lots shown inside of it for recording purposes. The next slide kind of blows up a couple parts of the, and it's, it's indicated again in Jerry's report, he talks about the setbacks for the property, and I'm just going to go back a minute again, because I want to confuse you. The setbacks for the property are 20 feet from side yard, 35 feet from right-of-way, and 35 feet from rear property. I believe that's correct, Jerry, is that not? 35, 35, and 20? And then 15 between buildings. So, the buildings are approximately, anywhere's from 45 feet to a little more apart from each other, as shown on the plan. The setbacks of 35 feet, because there really isn't a right-of-way, actually, Arnold Palmer Drive is a private outlot that happens to have a road situated on it, which provides access to the lodge. So, the landowner, White Birch, owns this outlot, they own the golf course, which is an outlot, and they own the property that's being subdivided. So, at least from my perspective, I was troubled with trying to figure out what was rear and what was front and what, I kind of got the side thing figured out, but, so I, so I wasn't, you know, wasn't sure whether it was really applicable, and I just show on my setbacks the 20-foot. With that regard, and as Jerry brings up, the concern is, oh, what, you know, what if somebody's really looking at this? I think it's, it's favorable that we should discuss what the ordinance requirements are, so that if it's an issue, we can, you know, get it on the table now. Because it's a planning development, there's flexibility in us, you know, kind of changing things up as it relates to setbacks. So, anyways, that's just sort of a segue then into this slide. So, as Jerry points out, there's, if you consider the golf course side of the property as the rear property line, requiring a 35-foot setback, four places along the golf course side do not meet that requirement. One is the maintenance building, one is Unit 9, is, I'm having trouble reading that, I think it's 20 feet about, 30 maybe, and then this one, this one's 20, number five, and then number two is just a little bit more than 20. So, those, those four areas deviate from the 35-foot setback if 35 feet was in fact the rear yard setback for this, for this particular line. So, the developer would like to present to you the fact that it is a golf course out in front. We're not encroaching on any other buildings or uses that would be looked at unfavorably by them, the existing and adjacent owner, and that the setback really is a non-issue. It's a passive use with the golf course, it provides the view corridors, and, and so it not being a concern to them, they believe it's something that you should provide forgiveness on and allow the 20-foot or whatever the variation is along those four lines to be approved as part of the adjustment to the planning and development. The other part that Jerry indicates is that along the southerly boundary of the project adjacent to Lot 1, there's actually a 50-foot buffer strip that was created originally in the golf course, whereas this unit here really is about 70, 70.9 feet away from the northerly right-of-way line of Weaver's Point Road, which exceeds the requirements for the 35-foot right-of-way requirement. So, it does meet the side yard of 20.9, where it would need to be 20 feet from a side property. Any questions about setbacks or? Yes, sir.
With the, a little shorter setback towards the golf course, I mean, not a big deal, but what about golf balls through windows?
Prey.
I don't know if that's, that's, are they putting in some kinds of screens? I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to disadvantage the golfer either, because these units are a little closer to their wild-ass slice.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just look at a couple of our photos. What's interesting, I mean, this is a dog lake, so this is coming, coming through like this, so the, if I go back to this slide, or, yeah, let's just do that. So, I mean, they're, they're pitching their balls this way, so I mean, I've golfed this and maybe some of you have, but the golf ball's kind of, if you don't get it to move down the fairway, it's going to come across in here more so. And then the green is up over here, so you're actually driving this direction, and there's a fair amount of trees. This cart path is snaking in a significant amount of pretty large pine trees, so the actual play of golf is not really conducive to drilling them into here, and I'm not saying that they wouldn't, because I probably would, but it isn't like a repetitious thing where it's a real narrow course. People are actually trying to slice it across at an angle here to get a better trajectory to the green and, and, and not even try to land up in here in this area. So, the women's tee is actually right about it here, so they're actually shooting in this direction here. But again, the, the resort has properties on the golf course, they're very much aware of the significant, and significance and damage that they cause. I mean, they have, like on Eagles Nest, put up barriers and detractors for the balls and so forth. But we are, you know, we're planning to go out there and look at it, and adjustments need to be made. I mean, we'll have to look and see what, what we possibly can do with that, but.
It really doesn't happen as often as you would think.
You have a golf.
We didn't want to be in White Birch State, but it doesn't happen that often.
Okay. The other problem, we've got a little, you said there's a lot of the big evergreen trees kind of right in front of the units. Don't the units kind of want to be able to look out at the golf course? Or if these trees are going to be in the way, are they going to stay?
It's, you know, it's interesting, because they're, it's, they're scattered along enough there that it actually provides a good kind of buffer and still view. I mean, it's like a yard area. If you were to go out there and walk this, there's probably a mowed area that's already mowed right up along where the edge of these buildings are already, so they're kind of like already set right up on the lawn of the course, is how they're situated. Going into kind of the utility plan, so, public sewer comes through here right now that's operated, maintained by the city of Breezy Point, goes to the clubhouse. There's another segment of it that comes up into this area right here on the south end, on the south side of the project for these four lots. So, essentially, we're going to leave the, you know, not really touch the existing sanitary sewer, we're just going to, like normal houses, punch in service lines from the units to the, to the main line. We'll have to do some, you know, bituminous digging and repairing as we set those in and put them into place. We indicate on the plans that we're going to have a common water system. Right now, we're showing the maintenance building here, which would potentially then run water to these units. We're, we're in discussion right now about possibly having a multiple wells, or at least a couple, so that we don't have such a long run-through here, but this presentation tells you that we'll have a common water system to serve the units. And parking, I guess that's the utility, so again, we had parking on the other plan. Stormwater and stormwater runoff and management, as you, as indicated on here, we have areas to capture the 100-year storm event, which is a requirement, and the goal is to actually make those rain gardens, so we can, you know, use them as a, more of a beautification rather than trying to channel the stormwater into one location, have a large dugout area to handle the runoff, use it for gardens, et cetera. And I think that's pretty much what this plan is. Any questions? So, landscaping perspective, this is again, kind of a picture of the south four units. This is what it could potentially look like if you were standing on the road. We've got some berms here with native flowers, and then the view of the golf course in the front, parking situated both ways, some fire pits and areas, and if you look really close, because I know Breezy Point likes them, there's a monarch here, and there's a monarch here. So, had to get the monarchs in.
There you go, a lot of monarch.
And then this, this kind of blows up that, so landscaping plan here kind of blows up the area that, that's, that would be typical, shows the parking. This again is the four units closest to the entrance, indicates the rain gardens that would be situated in those cases, the berms that are along the road to kind of screen the parking areas, and also the, the berms maintain the stormwater that would be on the parking lot, so that we can channel it back into the rain garden, so it doesn't just creep out into the road system. And then sort of just minimal construction around the units, which you'll see in a couple of slides following, and then each one of them has a fire pit, and then we're also planning on having a hot tub. There's a deck that sits out on the front of these, and it would either be enclosed in the deck, or sometimes the deck is high enough where the hot tub would go in the lower, the lower part of that. So, those are the landscaping views that we have. And again, this is kind of those typical features of what the berm might consist of, as well as the rain garden detail. This is the existing cottages that are across the street, and I thought, you know, again, I know everybody can drive by them and have seen them, but, you know, it's, it essentially indicates the kind of terrain changes that would occur in construction. It's, you know, minimal terrain, they want to come in there and sort of open up a hole to put a building in and not take the forest down, except for the homes. Again, this kind of indicates the, what the height is sticking out of the ground, as well as the patio or the porch that's out on the front of this particular unit. This is the building plan, so this was submitted, it's the building plans for the units that are out there now. There will be some slight modifications, but essentially, we wanted to show you that they, it's a six-bedroom unit, so there's three floors.
Four to six.
Six.
Four to six.
Four to six, correct. Sorry. Up to six bedrooms per unit. So, there's two bedrooms here, and then there's, the bathrooms show up, and we have kitchen area on the main level. It's a little sink, this is the lower level. And then they have kind of a loft area for the third. And then they have kind of a loft area for the third level. So this is open to below and there's two more bedrooms up above and then a bath and then a sink in each one of those bathroom, or bedrooms. Elevation view is kind of, you saw the picture, saw the picture below or above that we went through, it shows the existing units. This is sort of the actual planned view of them and looking at a maximum of three floors. It could be two again if we went to a four-bedroom instead of a six. And then the maximum building height based on your ordinance would not exceed 25 feet, which is a measurement that's half up the gable side of the roof. And that's what I have for you. So this is just the aerial view of the site planted there. So I guess that's, I mean, that's the presentation that I had from the slides. There's a few more slides on here in case you have questions that I can, that might be helpful if we need to look at them. But generally what, where we're heading to and I, you know, I, we've looked at the comments from Jerry and the suggested conditions and we are, you know, favorable to proceeding as has been indicated by staff.
Thank you, David. Jerry, would you proceed with the staff review?
I think you just did it for me.
Oh. I, you owe him.
Okay. Just make a few points. I think the presentation gave you an overview of what the project is. Again, it's a conditional use permit for a planned unit development and subdivision approval of a common interest community subdivision. And really that common interest community subdivision, as I understand, is basically a regular subdivision with a common interest for the, what David showed you was Lot 11, which everybody that's an owner of an individual unit owns a portion of that. And it comes with covenants that all the owners have to adhere to and rules and regulations and that type of thing. So it's a, it's a sophisticated residential subdivision. And it's kind of alphabet soup because we use the terms PUD, CUP and subdivision and whatever. But really it is just a housing subdivision for vacation rentals in a resort commercial area, which is an allowable activity and with the conditional use permit and the planned unit development. Again, I think there's only a couple of issues that the commission really has to be aware of. I think for the most part, the proposal meets the ordinance almost to a T. The two issues are the setback. It could be argued that the, because there is frontage on Weaver Point Drive and there is, Arnold Palmer Drive is a private road. There really is, the frontage is actually on Weaver Point. It could be argued that there is a side yard setback there. I think I could make the other argument that's, that's the rear because you're facing the rear of the buildings. I think you can make that either way, but I think the 20-foot setbacks on those three units in the maintenance building with the vast backyards, I don't think is a real issue. I think the biggest issue that the planning commission really needs to deal with is, is the parking. Strict adherence to the vacation rental section of the, the ordinance, which I believe is 153100, requires that there be two units for each individual unit plus 1.5 per bedroom, which would lend us 110. Their proposal is, gets us at 68. Going through that, if all those units, if those 10 units are six bedrooms apiece, what they're proposing is about one unit per bedroom. If we require more parking than what is being proposed, they're going to butt up against the 25% impervious coverage requirements. That's not insurmountable because they probably could provide surfaces that are pervious in those parking areas to make, to make that work. I, I've had some, I've had a lot of discussion with the developer about what do we do with, if there's not enough parking that's on site? And the developer has assured me that they would designate an area at the golf course that overflow could, could happen. And I kind of included that in the, in the staff report. And since I did the report and the resolution, one of the things I, I thought about was it's really not the passenger vehicles, the people coming to the, to the units and playing golf and, you know, and staying that really caused the problems for the parking in those areas. It's really the, the toys that come with those passenger vehicles. And, and maybe the legitimate compromise would be to require the trailers and those type of things to be parked someplace else so that these parking spaces could be always available for the passenger vehicles and the people that stay in the units. And I haven't talked to the developer about that, that I just bring that up to you as something that crossed my mind as I, I went out and I had to tour the facility last week. And I, Larry, I don't think you have to worry about hitting too many golf balls and where those, those things are. If you're over there, you're really bad. But I, I think that might be something that the, the commission might want to talk about a little bit. And the other thing, you know, we look at the parking requirements that are in the ordinance and maybe, maybe they're too stringent. And maybe down the, down the line, we should be thinking about reducing those or maybe we think they're okay and dealing with them as a planned unit development or a conditional use is, is an easier way to, to deal with variances from the parking. Either way, if there are some variances, setback and/or parking, those are all handled through one bundle, the PUD approval in the conditional use. They don't need individual variances. The commission can come to some consensus about the parking. I really believe that the project is, warrants the conditional use. It meets the terms of the conditional use. It meets the terms of our ordinance for the most part. And it also adheres to the comprehensive plan. So staff would recommend approval with conditions.
Thank you, Jerry. Are there any public statements?
I would just like to come up and just talk about the parking a little bit.
So we believe, the developer believes that the parking that's actually shown on the plan is sufficient to meet the, meet the needs that are out there. That, as Jerry said, about one stall per bedroom. Knowing that there'll be, you know, many times it's not going to be a driver per bedroom that are going to be there. There's going to be, you know, multiple people coming in a vehicle. That being said, I, you know, just from, just from other developments that have occurred in the city that I've been involved in, for instance, the motel that was the newly-built motel that's across from the, the boat landing, the Breezy Point boat landing, there was a provision there for parking, excess parking to be used up in antlers. So there, so there has been, there is history of allowing parking, not necessarily to be on-site, but provide other alternatives provided. Even in this particular instance, I know there's places near, you know, that can be accommodated for boat trailers near the resort area if that needs to be a consideration. We did do a calculation on the Arnold Palmer Lodge Golf Course Parking Lot area. I mean, we went back and we used your ordinance, counted up the, all the elements that would, that would create, what are the needs for that parking lot itself? And if you look at any aerial photos or even drive out there during what you think would be the most busiest season, there's, a third of it's used. The calculations actually show that it's twice as big as it needs to be. That if you actually calculated and built what should be there, it should be little, you know, could be much smaller. I think at the time when Arnold Palmer and the group that were designing it, were thinking of it, they actually, they actually designed the course to be available for a senior golf tournament, for a senior PGA tournament. But in order to get a senior PGA tournament up here, you need housing. And there is not enough housing to support it even regionally. So I think it was a pipe dream that they had and they wanted to make sure they accommodated what their, what their vision was. And they built this massive parking lot for people that probably won't find their way there for that kind of an event. So that said, I mean, I guess, one, we do believe there's adequate parking. If you choose to look at alternatives, we believe offsite that, that could be a compromise to look at overflow being designated in there. The only thing I would suggest that if we, and I'm not sure if you can write it up, but if there was, if it was ever determined that there was a change in the ordinance that, that lowered that number or by use you could indicate that the number is okay, that the encumbrance of the parking could be removed from the parking lot or the lodge if, if it was needed for some other planned use. I mean, maybe it gets turned back to green space rather than pavement, so. All right? Thank you.
I have a question. I'm not a golfer, so I'm not really familiar with, you know, golf courses. But would there be an issue with people having cars there and then having golf carts also? Where they want to use their golf cart to get back to their housing and then run up to the lodge? So that, that would be someplace you'd need additional parking?
For the golf cart?
Yeah.
I mean, there's that possibility. I mean, but golf carts are sort of like snowmobiles. They just go anyplace they think they want to go. They go on the lawn and, you know, they have the cart path out in front. So my guess, if I, if I had a golf cart and I was to drive out there, I would probably just jump right onto the cart path and it wouldn't even park in the parking lot. I'd be up on the lawn someplace, but, I mean, that's a good question. You know, I'm sure some people might park in the parking lot, you know, and take up a space.
I think the green fees at Deacon's includes a golf cart, so I don't think anybody would be bringing theirs. And I don't know if they also allow them to leave the property other than those of us who drive it for the butterfly release.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I don't think anybody travels with their own golf cart.
No, I don't either. Not in that course.
They can use ours. They may run to their unit to get some beer or something, but they're not going to be there very long. Our, our golf carts would be out there.
Typically, it isn't that much cheaper if you bring your own cart anyhow.
No cheaper.
Price is the same.
That discourages it for bringing your cart.
A question that if, you made the issue, in other words, to even run the max on those parking spots, that you'd be, all 10 units are being used with all 60 bedrooms being used before you run into a problem. And what's the likelihood that at least one or two of those units isn't going to be used at all during any of these times? So then there's room for, because you're not talking about one unit which, in, in just its number of spots, but you've got a collective group of units that each unit doesn't have a designated parking spot, you take anywhere you want, I guess, is that right, Jeff? And that, so that kind of, I want to ask you is, is over at the Frank Lloyd Wright House, what's the most people you've had over there, you know, I don't know how many bedrooms there are, and what's the most cars you've ever had over there?
I think there's five bedrooms. You know, I'm really not sure how many cars have been over there.
Has it ever been a problem for them finding a place? And I'm just starting to think if you've got, or you did somehow run out of place, you don't want people to park on, you know, you want them to use the overflow and not find a wide spot in the grass to pull their car because they didn't want to, you know, have somebody pick them up. And I guess when you set your rules for the ordinance deal, you've got to say absolutely no parking on lawns and they've got, they've got to know enough to go to the overflow parking.
And I think Jerry had a good idea. We've had other locations where we've said no trailers.
Yes.
In those kind of areas. Like, we need to put that eye on, you know, like at White Virgin Estates and I think Deo Fest, we've got that nice secret Robert sign that says, you know, which unit to be in this parking area is for, no trailers.
Yep.
And we just started to do something like that again, that would not be a problem.
Is that something we want to put in as a condition or, I mean, that's their covenant where they have to run through the city as well, but.
One of the conditions that I proposed in the, the resolution was that overflow parking be designated someplace else. I think we needed to have this discussion first. We can always include that as a condition. It really doesn't have to be a covenant because we're not going to enforce their covenants. We're going to enforce our conditions that are placed on the, the approval if it's approved.
But the renters or whoever is using the place just has to understand that those are the rules.
Well, I think that's probably part of.
They have to post it or something.
I think that's something that management needs to do as far as the booking and those kind of things. And I think they, they probably have rules posted in each unit as far as no tobacco and et cetera, et cetera. And I think that could be part of that, that whole management issue.
You mentioned something in here about appropriate signage and it would seem to me if they put like, you know, signs saying overflow parking somewhere else, no parking on the street, passenger vehicles only, however, whatever conditions come up, but they could be posted right in those parking spaces too, if they are willing to do signs to.
Yeah, like I said, that Robert sign, you can put information on there. And then every unit had a resort book that people can look at and see where the best pieces are, the home material, whatever, you know, and stuff like that. Because we all have stuff from that subterranean neighborhood, so no, no trailers in the parking.
Most of these renters are golfers, not snowmobilers anyhow, right?
Can you give people in the winter?
It's sleds.
We don't allow them on the golf course with their sleds, but we do get scrap workers and people like that, they may travel with trailers, but we do give them.
Okay, we can continue just the discussion and questions in the next agenda item. I'll, I'll ask again, are there any public statements? If not, I will close the public hearing and move to the next agenda item, which is the commission discussion of, of this conditional use allocation. We can continue the discussion and we can ask David, Jeff, staff questions.
Okay.
Do you have?
I do. When we, we rezoned that resort commercial, right? So is everything north of Weaver's Point Road Resort Commercial there?
Yes.
Is that going to have different regulations as far as lighting because of that, the excess parking lot that you have there? Is that going to help?
Right. Sure, the, the plan is in, is that there's lights on the building and then we're going to have a light pedestal out in the parking area so that there's, you know, both for safety and directional. So the plan is, is to have a light there in the parking.
Do we have a limit as to how high that light can be? Would that be a concern as far as the residences across or south of Weaver Lake Road?
One of the proposed conditions, and I believe that is number seven, is that parking areas need to be lighted, but it needs to be down-facing lighting so it doesn't get off the property.
The goal is to, to show a light similar to what has been used in the other developments that the resort has done recently as well as what's just across the street. It's just a small. It's just a small pedestal with just a, you know, a very faint lighter, and it's not highly illuminated.
So something was not going to be in the windows of the house?
Yeah. Yeah, if you were to go out there right now and look, it's, I'm not even sure you, I didn't recognize, Jeff brought to my attention, said, hey, didn't you see the lights in the parking area where you walk from the parking to the sidewalk piece? And it's, it's a relatively small, they're not high, they're actually only about this high or so, about six feet, five, six feet tall. So it's just sort of a half a globe that's sticking on a four by four piece of wood.
I have one other question. You have the accessible floor plans to accommodate all ages of resort guests. Are some of the bathrooms also going to be handicapped accessible?
The only bathrooms that could be would be the ones on the main floor.
Oh, yeah.
I found Oliver required to have them all that way, but certainly a couple of them could be.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure, the, the master bathroom could be, it would just be changing a couple of doors and three doors to get the wheelchairs through there. I don't definitely want to expect that right now. At this point in time, it could be anything, because we still have the draft plan, but we have the, the footprints that we showed here, still the drawing of the plans with someone, and certainly stuck with three doors.
Just curious.
Yeah.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, other questions?
That 25-foot high, I'm a little confused. Does it, doesn't it go to the peak, or does it go only to the middle?
It's midway on the peak.
Okay.
If you look at the definition section under Building 1, there's a drawing that actually shows how it's calculated.
Okay. And, and the reason they did that, because I was involved in the committee on the DNR when they did that back in 89, is if you take a roof and it, and it's a triangle, if you cut it in half and put the two pieces down, now you've filled up that whole box. And so it's like, okay, well, because it's at a peak, then only half of it's really impacting a view, a view corridor. A simplified version of it.
I have a question about the landscape plan. That, that will be ready, what, six months from the date that the CUP is approved?
The plan itself?
It says, it says in here that the, our landscape plan shall be presented to the PNC within six months from the date of final acceptance.
Final, is final acceptance of the final plot or this plot?
Final plot.
So this is the preliminary plot. When the final plot comes through, that, that will, that will be another event. And we have, there's a year time period, both based on your ordinance as well as Minnesota statutes, that require us either come in and ask for an extension on the preliminary plot, or actually bring the final plot to you. And at that time, then all of the other sequential pieces need to come into play. We need to bring in the declaration and covenants. The landscaping plan, as you said, needs to kind of follow along with that, as well as other construction documents for sewer and water and so forth, so. So, at, at a point along the navigational chart, there will be a plan that will be submitted.
Okay, so if we approve a CUP tonight, you have one year to get all, to get to, for the final plot to come in?
Correct.
Correct, okay, and what is your projected? Are you thinking a month, six months? You're looking at the full year, what do you think?
Well, when I, when we made the presentation originally, we had talked about trying to, you know, try to get construction in the ground this year. But even construction doesn't necessarily require us to bring a plot to you, except there's going to be documentation needed to, to move that forward. It's not till we actually sell a unit that we need a plot, except we probably need a building permit, so we'll need a lot, correct?
Yes.
Yep. So, that being said, if we do want to build this fall, we would need to bring a final plot back in front of you sometime before we pull a building permit.
And my, part of the reason I'm asking that is in that description, it says up to seven-year project timeframe. So does that mean from now till seven years from now, that's your timeframe?
That's what it was intended to me, mean. And again, it's sort of an, an economy thing, a chicken and the egg. I don't have the crystal ball answer. If somebody were to come in tomorrow and say, we heard you had, you got your preliminary plot approved, we'd like to buy all 10 of the units, can we start building them tomorrow? I mean, the time period went from seven to zero. So it's, it's, it's more of a, an elongation of when we think we might reach an end if, if it's a slow process. But I mean, I think the developer's goal would be that it happened, you know, sometime within the next 24 to 36 months.
Would that not be true?
I mean, they don't, they don't want to have a plot approved and not proceed with the due diligence and then, you know, move forward with construction. I mean, that's, their goal would be to, it, to be successful, both for the resort rentals as well as being able to sell it to investors.
Seven years just seems like a long timeframe.
It does, yeah. No, I appreciate the, the question. It was, it was the same, you know, it was a covenant, they're a, a part of a condition that actually followed through in a discussion that was on White Birch Estates originally, and, which actually took a little over seven years to get from the beginning to the end. Now, there's quite, quite a few more units, so this is, you know, fewer units, but just to carry over, because it's always a good conversation to have about how do we get from the beginning of the construction to the end.
A question for Joe. Is there any concern by the city of the amount of salt that's going to be dumped into the system by an intense development like this?
Salt as in?
The salt from water softeners.
Oh, well, like what we did with White Birch Estates, we had them dump into a drain field essentially, instead of the, the city sanitary sewer, there, that's all brine leftovers, if you will. So there's sort of a separate disposal for that, that stuff.
Is, is that the plan here?
I, I don't know if they even thought about it that far, but that's how Joe handled it in that development, and I think he'd like to see that again.
My concern would be, I, I've been on the Pelican Lake Association board, and there is a problem with salinization of Pelican Lake. There, there's actually evidence that septic systems are going into the aquifer eventually, and the salt isn't being taken out.
Sure.
The bacteria is, but not the salt, and it ends, it's ending up in, in Pelican Lake.
Well, even if it were to go in the city sanitary sewer system, we spray irrigate in the forest.
Right.
You know, you're going to get it here or there, it's just a fact of the moment. But Joe felt it was the, the better of two choices to have a small drain field for that.
He should know. I, unfortunately, I'm in probably the same aquifer that these wells are going to be in, and we not only have a lot of iron, but we have tannins, and those softeners are regenerating about every four days. So, if anybody, if, if anybody's golfed the golf course, you, you see red trees up about 10 feet from being sprayed by air. Unfortunately, people who live close to the lake have their waters fine.
Yeah. No, I know, I actually personally have lived in that neighborhood all four different locations of it, so I know exactly what you're talking about. If you're fortunate to get deep enough or get to the right place, you sometimes can bypass that, but most often, in between 0 to 120, you're going to get not good water. I mean, a lot of iron and so forth, so.
My neighbor went down 185 feet and still has the same water.
I'm 190 feet on the peninsula out there. 196 to be exact, and I still got iron.
I'm 65, just put a new well in, and it's great.
It's great, don't even, some don't even use softener.
So, I mean, that's part of, one of the, one of the things that we're investigating is by having a cent, if we have a central well in a central maintenance building, we can treat it at one site.
Which happens at the, two cabins by me.
Yeah.
The maintenance building has the softener in it to...
But well, I mean, whatever is required for us to, you know, make sure we're in compliance with the city's sanitary system and discharge in the water, we'll work to make sure that...
The, the good thing is that it's seasonal, you know, there isn't a lot of water being dumped in the system in the wintertime, but pretty intense in the summertime, I, I would imagine, all of the people staying in there.
Right.
I have one more question. There's a comment at the end under be it further resolved, about requiring parkland dedication?
Yes.
And that gets done then at the final?
Be done at the preliminary plot with the council. There's, there's kind of two, two phases here. You guys are approving the CUP for the PUD, you're also recommending approval of the subdivision. The subdivision portion of this has to go to the city council, and at that time, we'll, we'll address that. They have three existing lots, they're putting in 10, and so they'd be looking at 7/10 of the parkland dedication, which is 10% of the purchase price of the property. And so, we've got that calculation figured out, and the council will deal with that.
Any questions?
I'm always last.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Gary. Last but not least.
Last but not least, no. Just a couple of quick observations. That was a very thorough presentation on Mr. Landmeier's part, well presented.
Thank you.
I need that stuff. I could understand every bit, but I've got a few years behind me, so. Parking, I don't see as any problem personally whatsoever. The Wright House was brought up, and, and, I don't know if Jeff remembers or not, but I walked through that place with you and, and the owner when it was being re- renovated. I drive by it every day since it was opened and newly renovated. I have never, even in high season, seen a problem with parking there, period. And the trailers was a great idea by, by, by the zoning administrator, great idea. And, and you've done, already done that on the hill, going haul your trailers up on the hill, because it would block the whole drive down there. So I don't see any problem, great project.
Just a quick question, Jeff, if you know the answer to it. Jeff, do you limit the number of occupants in the existing cabins? In, in other words, only X number of people are allowed to register to be occupants?
They, when they, when they make the reservation, they try to do that. At the same time, if it's a, you know, i- if you can head it off, because we don't want to, we try not to rent to certain parties like frat parties, because that tends to get out of hand. No, we just got six or eight people coming, and all of a sudden, it's 20 or 30. And we've had that happen down at the main resort, and, and we've gotten burned on that.
You've had it happen at the cabin by me too.
Well, okay. Which one?
The big one.
Okay, that one's not ours?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I just want to make that clear. So, yeah, we, we've, we try to do that when the, when the reservationists are, are taking the reservation, they try to ask those questions about how many people are going to be there. We don't charge on a per-person basis. It's a, a flat fee, and, but we still try to ask those questions, because we, we want to try and head off a problem before it starts.
And that will help the parking situation. I, you know, have to tell you that it is different under Breezy Management versus Grand Views.
Which way?
In a better way.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I was waiting for the shoe to drop on that one.
Grand View is actually bringing guys in, in Greyhound buses.
Oh, really? I had not heard that.
And, so parking wasn't the issue, that not a lot of people were...
And we still, we have our own bus, of course. We have, we have a couple of shuttle buses, and, and I think people like that, because we'll shuttle them around wherever they need to go, and, and so that, that I think is a good thing. And, you know, if they want to leave their, their boat down there, we can still pick them up and bring them back to the unit. You know, they don't have to walk or anything like that, so, we, we do tell them...
And the other good thing is security is a whole lot closer than it was for Grand View. It took an hour for their security to get...
Yeah, and, you know, as the neighbor out there, feel free to call. Joe, also call our security guys, and, and they'll take care of it. If, if it's too much for them, they, they're not afraid to call the cops either, so.
Exactly, yeah. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there, if there's no further discussion or no questions, we will move to the next, oh, I'm sorry, Jerry.
I got to ask the question, as long as we've had the discussion. Are you satisfied that the 68 units for passenger vehicles is, is okay?
I think we are. Nobody objected.
And there's no objection as far as the setbacks and the layout of being okay?
Yeah. It's a good project, and we want to try and make it doable more than not doable.
Well, I, I think that's everybody's intent, it's just, I just wanted to make, make it clear that we, we at least addressed it, and, and we brought it out. Good point.
One of the options, Jerry, that you presented to us is that, that 68 would be okay with a provision that there would be overflow parking...
Available someplace.
Available.
Yes.
And if I could, I'd, I'd review the, the, my proposed conditions with you, so that you can look at that. The conditions that I have proposed in the, in the resolution are, is that the, it's 10 units, and then a maintenance facility, cannot exceed 25% effervious coverage, maximum height 25 feet. Erosion control managed to minimize likelihood of erosion during the project and after construction. They're going to need to obtain an NPDES permit, that is for onsite management of stormwater. Parking areas to be hard-surfaced, parking areas to be lighted with down-facing lighting. Parking spaces shall include 68 spaces for passenger vehicles, overflow parking for accessories, and accessory parking areas shall be designated with appropriate signage at Deacon's Lodge Parking Lot. Trash receptacles must be contained in a screened enclosure. Stormwater management, rain gardens maintained. Minimum of 50% of the area must be preserved as green space. Landscape plan within six months. Lodging license, the CUP is subject to the preliminary approval of, or the approval of the preliminary plat by the city council. That's the kind of the confusing part of this. The CUP, PUD is approved by the planning commission. That does not go to the city council. What goes to the city council is the subdivision, which is basically the outline or the, the boundaries of the, the project with the individual lots as shown on, on the project. That should, should you approve this resolution, that will be forwarded to the city council for their consideration at their June meeting. If the CUP is not acted on in one year, it's time of the preliminary plat approval, it becomes void. The, the resolution also finds a basis for parkland dedication, we've, we've talked about that. And it also recommends that the second division, Deacon's Lodge Second Edition or subdivision, preliminary plat be approved by the city council. It's a... preliminary plat be approved by the city council. It's a recommendation of you. So, in this resolution, you're, you're finding that it meets the terms of the ordinance. You're granting approval with conditions. You're recommending that the preliminary plat be approved by the council.
Yes, your chair.
David?
Yes. Couple of, couple of items. Parking.
So, the provision was, I'll paraphrase it, but the provision was is that overflow parking be provided or allowed in the Deacon's Lodge golf, or the clubhouse parking, or whatever it's called. I'm just wondering, based on the conversation we just had, if, rather than designating that as the only place, that it could be, that we could just say resort managed parking areas or something like that? Because again, if I have a trailer with a boat on it, for security reasons and ease of using it, putting it down by the marina might be more logical than using the parking lot. Not that that couldn't also be available, that, that we allow for other, other locations. And I'm not sure how that would change your wording, but it might say and/or other resort parking areas. Just so that we're not forced, or we don't, the intention is, doesn't look like, we're going to provide the balance of 68 to 110 in that spot, so that if, if we have them in different locations, that it's okay. Does that make sense?
Jerry, it's your, it's your recommendation. What is your reaction?
I don't, I don't have a big problem with that. I, the wording came about by a conversation with Jeff, and we, he said, well, we could always put parking over there. So, that's, that's where the wording came from. If it's Deacon's Lodge or, you know, Timbuktu, I don't, I don't really care, as long as there is someplace that the people are aware of that they can park those, the toys and the trailers. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. So, so my recommendation would be just and/or other resort designated parking areas. Just, just to add to it, just so that, you know, someone's not out counting vehicles and going, well, why aren't there 110 vehicles here? The other thing that just came to my mind is Jerry was indicating in his staff comments about the, um, the numbering of the lots, so 10 residential lots for the resort rental pool units, cottages. The other thing that I, that I've missed is that the maintenance building should also be on its own separate lot.
So, there's 11 lots?
So, there's 11 lots, and Lot 12 would be the common lot, which would come along in the final plat. We would illustrate that in a revision to the preliminary, but also it would come along in the, in the final plat. And, and the reason for that is, is it is a maintenance building, and the facilities is going to have laundry and maintenance things, linens and so forth for the units, and the resort would want to maintain control of it so that the owners didn't decide to do something silly with it, and it wasn't, you know, maintained or being able to be maintained by the resort. So, just more from a control perspective on the maintenance side. There probably would be, there would be an additional fee of whatever, $5 or $25 for that.
Park dedication also.
Thank you for giving us.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we are in Agenda Item G then, which is consideration of, of the resolution. Joe or Jerry, have, have you captured the discussion of the revisions?
I, for the most part, I think that nothing that we've really discussed here has changed the, the crux of the resolution. The, you know, there's some dotting some i's and crossing t's, but that, you know, and I left the, in the resolution, I left a number of parking spaces empty as long as, I'm hoping that we would come to consensus, and consensus is that 68 is acceptable as long as we have overflow parking. So, I think that's the crux of the issue.
And hopefully, we can clarify that, Jerry, through the maker of the motion. Does that make sense to you, that, that we'll plug that number in there as the, as the motion is made?
I've kind of already plugged it in.
Oh. Make reference to it, that's all.
Okay. And everyone is, is understanding of that and comfortable with that?
And this wording for overflow parking sounds fine. Overflow parking areas shall be designated with appropriate signage at Deacon's Lodge parking lot. That kind of covers it, doesn't it?
I think David was saying it wouldn't necessarily be just Deacon's Lodge parking lot. It might be a parking lot at the resort. Is that what you're saying?
Right, because after the, after the period, it's probably saying there are other related resort parking areas or something like that.
But the sign, I mean, the signage could say that, but why, but I don't think we need to have that in here.
No, the signage is.
Yeah.
Good. Is everyone then clear what the proposed motion is? And if so, would someone be willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that it be approved as discussed. How is that?
I'll second it.
Do you have a motion in a second, discussion of the motion? Any discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion passed.
Good project.
Joe, I forgot to go through the findings and...
I, I think you did indirectly, so.
Did I? Okay.
We're, we're in good shape. I think you nailed it pretty good.
I sit here thinking, I'm going to do that, I'm going to do that, and then I forgot.
I think one of the purposes that I, I reviewed the ordinance or the, the resolution was to say that we, the findings show that it meets the terms of the, the ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Did say that in that, that presentation.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good job. Joe, we have a visitor that was at the bottom of the list that I think Jerry would like to move forward.
Okay. Which?
Actually, if, if we could, could we deviate from the, the agenda a little bit and take under other? Vegetation removal. Can we have that discussion now?
I don't see why not. Is there any objections? Let's, let's go ahead.
I got a call last week from Mike Weebolt, who owns Pelican Square, and I believe his manager is here. And I almost forget his name, so I've, excuse me, Justin?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, the, the, Mike is trying to get ready to do a project in the back of his building of Pelican Square, and there's a vacant lot back there. There's some parking, and he asked about clear cutting of trees. If he could clear cut the trees so that he could get his property ready to do the project, whatever it is. I think it's in, probably going to be in addition to the, the, the convenience store and whatever, and parking and, and those type of things. But in order to get ready for that, he would like to cut the trees. So, he asked, what does the ordinance say? And the ordinance basically says that you can't cut more than, if you cut more than 25% of the trees in a commercial district, you need to have a conditional use permit. Now, we had a discussion with the airport just about a month ago about clear cutting of some trees because of runways and that type of thing, and it, it kind of piggybacks on that, that commercial activities have a much bigger expansive, that they're allowed like 50% of impervious coverage in the, in the backside. And it probably doesn't make a lot of sense that they can only cut 25% of the trees without a conditional use permit. I'm wondering how the commission feels about that, if that's something we can't look at changing in the ordinance? Or you think that regulating the cutting of trees on a commercial lot and small lots, if you cut more than 25%, they should have a conditional use permit? That's the question.
Reaction from the commissioners?
Would it be case by case, or, I, I understand what you're saying, you know?
If I can just add to this, I mean, we've had problems, and when we started this whole review of the ordinance for narratives, one of the discussions we had was, you know, we have builders that will buy a lot, and they'll go and cut all the trees down and never let us know, and then a year later, they build a house there. And so, that's clear cutting the trees. It's technically a violation of the ordinance. There's no way we know what's going on until after it's been done. Secondly, you know, 25%, 75%, I don't care what number it is, that means we've either got to make a judgment call or we got to go out and count trees and do inventory and see, how many did we cut down, and how many's left? And, you know, was it this size or that size? And it's just sort of an impractical thing. And then you, you add it to commercial property where it's for development, you know, is, is that a, excuse is not the right word, but is that a legitimate reason for cutting those trees to provide for that development? And I would have to say yes. But I'm not really sure exactly how this all fits together, and so that's why we're having the discussion.
When you say clear cut, do you mean like everything?
Clear cut, everything.
Totally.
I think, I think the intention here is to cut the trees that are on the lot in order to make it ready for parking and, and those type of activities.
Do we give a lot of control until we find out what it is they're going to use that empty space for that they're creating? I mean, that's what I say, we're, you don't want them just, if, if they could just automatically just clear cut without any construction plans, does that get us where we don't want to be?
In other words, have a building footprint figured out and see how many trees or, or where the trees are going to be removed rather than just clear the whole lot? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of, but I'm not sure how you go about that unless you did it with a, like a variance-type thing. Maybe you just got to ask for variance for clear cutting for this purpose versus just saying you clear cut it no matter what because it's commercial property.
Justin may be able to give us a little bit more information if you're willing.
Can I get your comment to the mic?
Might as well.
Justin Wallene, Pelican Square, Chairman, members of the commission. We are looking at, obviously, we will have the, Mike owns the back two small lots up to the Lakes and Leisure Building, virtually up to the back of that. We're looking at doing an expansion that may be in up to two steps, but it would involve clearing probably the whole lot except for obviously whatever's in the right-of-way of County Road 11. Obviously, we would leave anything there. We'd have it surveyed before we would do any cutting. But it would need, for what we are expecting to do, it would need to be clear cutted.
And, and Justin, from, based on your information, does that literally eliminate all the trees right up to?
Temporarily, yes, it would.
Okay.
Yep. The, the plan is, is, is obviously, we'll have a site plan in front of you guys, hopefully in June, and hopefully upon your approval, we'll start breaking ground on a car wash, which would be step one. Step two, maybe this fall or next summer, depending on logistical reasons, expanding the size of our building and putting some parking in behind for employees as well. With that, we'll also landscape very nicely and put a berm, and actually, we have Dodi working on, Dodi Brothers working on a site plan right now, and then some other firms putting on a little bit more professional one that is going to have the floor plan or the footprint for us. We'll have some berms, and maybe you'll all have to have a couple retaining walls just because of the lay of the land, and we'll make sure it's landscaped very nicely, leading back to the car wash.
The dilemma for you is if, if we were to say, no, there needs to be 25% of those trees left, that pretty much eliminates your plan, right?
Yeah, and it would, but once, I'm not, I don't mean this unargumentative. Technically, I guess it's a commercial land, and we're supposed to be able to do 50%, you know, 50% and, you know, impervious, I, I don't know where that balance falls in. You know, if I can only take down 25% of the trees, but I'm supposed to be able to use 50% of the land, I, I can't build a tree for it.
We're, we're not disputing your, your case, quite frankly.
I didn't mean to make a joke.
We appreciate your dilemma more than anything else. The other issue for us is that, you know, and I think Cliff was a good example of that with the airport discussion. He said, well, I cut 25% today, and next week, I'll cut another 25%, and next week after that, it's, it's another 25%. Where do you stop it? You know, and if somebody is bound and determined to clear cut for a good purpose, how do you stop that? Or how do you, how do you regulate that?
No, you can't.
Well, it, it is a dilemma for us from a, from an enforcement standpoint. And, and just answering questions of people, it makes it very cumbersome.
Jerry brought up another point. We're going to require conditional use for, for the expansion of their building. Does it make sense to require conditional use, take down the trees, and then come back and get another conditional use for expansion of the building? You know, I, you know, it's just the snowball thing.
Is this something, though, that we should be, I mean, aside from his project, addressing again on the land use chart? I mean, if we're going to be having commercial development with these same kinds of questions, then even though the chart has been approved, and that's fine, and we know it's a working document, maybe we need to look at those five, six, seven, whatever at the end, vegetation removals.
From, from our standpoint, I think that would be a cleaner way to handle it than, than to go through the conditional use process. It might take the same amount of time, but at least it, we get it over with and done. We don't have to revisit that, that same type of issue every time.
That maybe doesn't help him out tonight, though. He probably wants an answer about clear cutting.
It'd be nice.
As the ordinance stands today, the clear cutting is not allowed under, except with a conditional use permit. And had, had he asked the question a month ago, we could have gone through the, the conditional use permit, and, and it wouldn't have been an issue. But he's, wants to do it sooner than, than later. It's unfortunate. As it stands, he may have to wait till the next planning commission meeting. Actually, actually, the conditional use would be quicker because if we change the chart, which we probably could do the same way, it has to go through the, the city council in order to change the chart.
Get the order in front of the cart, get the CUP, and then worry about the ordinance.
But that means he's going to have to, they get one for removing the trees and then have to come back and get another.
Unless he combines it into one bin.
Yeah. Which we can do then, hopefully have that ready for your, your agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, just keep in mind timelines because we have to publish notice.
Yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin. So, we will expect that we will have a public hearing on the conditional use permit next month.
I would assume that.
Okay, we will go back to Agenda Item H, which is Planning Commission staff discussion of four items. First is animal husbandry. It, it is what Jerry reported on in, in his report. How do we begin this? Do, Joe, Jerry, uh, Gary, do you want to?
I'll start, and, and the boss can correct me. I think a simple answer to this for, for the commission would be, a- as the council suggested, and I'm merely paraphrasing them, organize or form a committee of how many, I have no idea, and who sits on that committee, I don't either, to... idea, and who sits on that committee, I don't either, to research this. And I don't know if a month's time is enough to come back with a consensus. Joe says no. The sooner you get a committee working on this, in my opinion, bringing back a consensus of opinion for a motion, I think that's going to move this along quicker, myself. If you guys debate this tonight for three hours and in the next session and it'll go forever, that's my suggestion and these gentlemen, I'm sure have a lot better advice than I can give.
What was suggested at the council meeting was that we get the planning commission, whether it's committee or our staff or a few interested people to kind of research the issue and try to come to some understanding about the direction that we want to go in and then maybe fine tune that direction just a little bit and then involve a couple council members and that have volunteered. Gary, maybe Michael.
One has, Mike Maroni has offered.
Yeah, Mike Maroni has volunteered.
I can do that as a liaison?
Oh, sure.
Well, count me in, I'll jump in with you.
And then we can hopefully come to some consensus as to how we want to proceed and then go from there.
Can I ask that as we're looking at animal husbandry, we also examine the part of the zoning ordinance that deals with permitting? Because I think that was where there was perhaps some misunderstanding. You know, the permitting process, I guess I personally did not understand that that was an either or. I guess I thought if you had chickens, you had to have a permit. Well, that's not the case if it's under animal husbandry. And so there's, it's not just animal husbandry, it's the whole issue of having farm animals in a residential area and how do we either allow them, not allow them, limit them, or whatever? Because the permitting process is directly contrary to what's done with animal husbandry. Under the permitting, on these lots where you can have 200 or whatever chickens, under 90 point, whatever it is, you can only have 10, even if it's 20 acres, 10 chickens. That's a far different number. And I think that's, you know, that's where there were people who were upset on Northwoods Lane. I'm sorry, more of them didn't speak up frankly than one, but because it's hard to understand those animal units. And it's the same thing, right under animal husbandry, we talk about animal units, but under the animal husbandry definition, dogs, two or more. Well, that doesn't fit into the animal limit chart, neither does cats. So we have a lot of numbers that need to be cleared up.
Well, as Gary suggested earlier in the meeting, you know, maybe we scrap this system and find a new system and find something that works for everybody. I don't really know what the outcome is or the answer, but.
It's been there forever. Three planning commission terms, folks. It was, and it's still.
Well, then it's time to deal with it.
Yes, I agree.
The other question is really, do we want to allow them to be in town? And that really needs, that is the crux of the question.
It is.
You know, and if you decide you want to allow them, then we can deal with
Control.
The controls and permitting and that type of thing. But the real question, it begs itself, is do we want to allow certain types of animals in Breezy Point? And I think until we come to that conclusion, it's going to be very hard to get us to the next step.
In residential areas. I don't think any of us would disagree that in agricultural area, there, that's a given. But in a residential lot of 10 acres or whatever it is, I think that's going to be the bigger issue. And frankly, I don't even know what the opinions are of everybody sitting here, so.
I don't know that either. That's why I asked the question and I think we really need to ask that question of each other and just come to some kind of a conclusion.
Didn't we also just plan to eliminate agriculture anyway, so there is no agricultural?
No, we have urban reserve.
The other thing that happens, just because something is zoned, something or it's indicated on the map, doesn't mean that that's what it is at this time. You know, that's, a lot of it is based on this is what the future development should happen.
And also Gary brought up something earlier that I think, again, for all of us, is the difference between an interim use permit and a conditional use permit. And we all know what the definition is, but then apply it to a piece of land for permanent or for interim. And that's also the other question we need to ask.
And maybe you want all of them to be interim use permits. That's another option.
Eliminates the U.P.
Yeah, it might, it'd be probably a better option in some respects because things change. But.
Planning Commission, excuse me. You brought up things change and that was one of Otto's key points that struck my, planning commissions change, as we all know, councils change, as we all know. So I just think it needs to be defined, the council, it needs to be defined, rewritten, tightened, loosened, whatever.
So how would you like to proceed, Joe?
Well, what I'm hearing proposed is that there be a discussion among the commission members tonight on whether or not we're in favor of animals within Breezy Point. I would assume the reason for that is to give some direction to a committee. Am I correct?
Yes, and we also probably need to pay attention to Minnesota statutes and legal opinions because it may be that we have to have some sort of opening for animals in the city. So we need to know legally.
And Joe and I had a discussion about this a few days ago and I think it's in the progress. Joe, is it not that attorneys being consulted on some guidance here?
That's on another issue.
Ten-four, I think.
Okay, we are now discussing whether or not animals should be permitted within the city limits of Breezy Point. Who wants to kick off that discussion?
I'll stutter out and I think, you know, Breezy Point, you can look at our maps, it's a big place. We've got some great big lots, we've got a lot of acreage. I don't see where, if somebody wants to have a horse, they've got a 20 acre farm in Breezy Point within the city limits, there's no harm in them having that. I don't know that we want to be big government trying to control everything about everybody's life in our city.
Next.
I agree with what you're saying because, you know, the comprehensive plan says an up north field, but everybody has a different idea. You know, we don't want any dinin' in the middle of growing county.
But hardly defined, what is an up north field? I mean, basically, just drive down the roads, you see trees, you see lakes, that's the up north feeling. Whether you put a gas station in there or not, it doesn't take away the up north feeling.
And, you know, you might see five deer in the field, well, that's a whole lot different than five horses out there in the field.
I don't think it's going to take away your feel for the area that is up north because you saw horses instead of a deer.
Five horses or five hogs was.
Yeah.
Animals are part of the up north.
Yes.
There's a lot of farm country around here.
I just said, if you have five horses or five hogs, or pigs, it's kind of a different, you know, or cows or.
So do we want to make a list?
Horses are allowed, not pigs.
Then you get your giraffes. We've got, there's millions of animals, we got to list them all that we accept or all that we don't accept?
Mr. Chair? Let's keep it simple. Let's not create another ordinance like we've got right now with .10 units equals this. Simple. I'm going to say my piece, now then you won't have to bother with me. I agree with my two colleagues to my left. This is, this is a wonderful area and I can't imagine a planning commission sitting in these chairs, for that matter, council, that's going to allow 50 pigs on that 20 acres. For example, just that one. There's a consensus of opinion, I think we've got two more to go here. I want to see that allowed. I agree with these folks completely. And it comes to these people sitting in the seat, what's reasonable and what's reasonable amount of land for three horses or whatever. And keep it that simple, get a committee together and get it done.
I agree. I mean, how many pieces of 20 acre parcels are in Breezy Point?
Quite a few.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
It's something bigger than 20 acres.
Quite a few.
I used to have 20 acres and our neighbors had peacocks and.
Sure, we had ostriches.
Guineas and they made weird noises and they were worse than a sheep, but.
Whole bunch of ostriches downward, coming up on the next to the agenda, running around there with their heads up. Remember that, David. So I think the committee is well equipped to come up with a good.
We have a group from Pink.
That's right, you have it. And I don't agree with the rest of them with the numbers, I guess is where I have an issue. I don't care on a large piece of property if there are farm animals. But we have it in our charts where it can be even less than 10 acres and a lot of them at 10 acres. And I'm sorry, those are residential areas I don't want to see farm animals in. I just, I would not wish to have them next door to me.
Good point.
And I don't care if it's a cow or a horse or a chicken or 10 chickens. I don't want them there. So larger plots of land, now, I realize we have a comprehensive plan that has designated areas, we'd have to look at where would be the limit if we were going to have it in residential areas. But residential areas that, you know, are smaller, I mean, in Delwood Acres where the lots are small, they could be having chickens on those small lots with a permit. I would not be happy about that.
I believe Minneapolis allows it.
Two chickens.
Two chickens. What's the big deal?
Well, that's right.
To limit the numbers.
It's the numbers.
It's the numbers, that's right. And it would have to be size of the property and the numbers.
What, 150, 100 foot lot? You want chickens? We'll give you two, I'll give you one, maybe two. It's the numbers. Control it.
So do I hear you saying, Peggy, you're, you are in favor of animals within Breezy Point if there is reasonable control of the numbers?
And the numbers we have now are not reasonable.
As a rookie commissioner here, I kind of went, wow, you can have that many sheep and that many chickens on? I was surprised, you know.
However, he has to have a conditional use permit, so we could limit that.
Absolutely. That's right.
With the potential.
Are there standardized numbers that, or do we make those up ourselves?
They're pretty standard numbers.
That's the point, as I say, is they kind of were standard. So we didn't jump in and say, well, you can have 600 chickens as you've got this many acres. Kind of the standard was is that if you've got that many acres, you're allowed through their formulas, you know, and we can make them more restrictive, but that's kind of where we went by, we went with whatever was standard for the industry, I guess.
Well, that's intensive agricultural farm use, you know, and I think Peggy's right that's a little much.
If we don't like those numbers, then we should probably change them. That's what you're talking, we get this subcommittee to do is just find out what is the right number and where, you know, and again, if you've got a small enough lot because it's residential, the numbers aren't going to work for you to have any. With the exception, maybe you have two chickens and one rabbit, but.
Yeah, it's going to be a work in progress, yes.
Have we given the committee sufficient direction? We've heard.
I think so, but we need a committee.
It's on the committee.
We got Gary and Michael when it comes to council.
Let me, let me ask for volunteers and I would suggest that at least a couple of our most seasoned commission members be.
What a dirty trade that was.
Okay, most seasoned, stand up.
How insane would you.
I think this committee would benefit from the involvement of a couple of people who have had some experience on the commission.
Now, are we talking about a committee just of P and Z people or is this going to?
For the time being, we're going to start with just the planning commission and if Gary wants to participate.
Well, just a minute now, here, just a minute now.
Let's do, let's combine.
I don't know if you want Mike Maroni and I from the get-go or we come in halfway?
I think we need to do just a little sorting.
I think so too.
And then, once we kind of get going, yes, I want to see that participation.
One question. Jerry, you're going to be actively involved with this.
I don't really want to.
Might I make a suggestion? The only reason is because of your vast experience. You've got a lot of experience here. I personally would like to see you sit on that committee. They need guidance.
Staff will participate, Gary. I just, we need two planning commissioners to start ball rolling.
Well. Do we have a couple of volunteers? I would volunteer.
I'd rather not, but I will if I have to. I have a pretty busy schedule, you know, routine.
You would honor us.
I would volunteer if nobody else steps up to the plate, so Carol, it's up to you to step up to the plate. I would volunteer too.
Steps.
Either Peggy or I.
So Larry and Carol?
Okay.
Somebody's got to be.
Who's doing it, Larry and Carol?
Larry and Carol.
All right, if you guys want me, I will be there at the outset. That's, you make that decision.
I think you've got something to add. I think you've got something to add.
Well, three planning commissions, I think I do.
I think we have a lot of research to do first.
I'm afraid so, you do. So I will, you let me know when you want me there or whoever's running this thing.
Well, this is the first time in years that this has come up, evidently.
It's been on the chart, but.
It has, but this is the first time.
We'll try to do some research and see how other cities handle this. There's got to be another way. Bring those things to the table and we'll start talking.
Thank you, Carol and Larry.
Who's going to try and, who's going to set it up as to when they want to try to get people to.
We'll get a hold of Larry. We'll take care of that, yes.
Okay, number two is zoning complaints. Do you want to guide us into that, Joe?
Well, it's just more of an update. There's really not a whole lot you can talk about. There's two issues there that came up at the council meeting, I think they came up at the planning commission meeting last time as well. The Finger Hut trailer is kind of maybe the sore spot. We looked at the ordinance, we're finding it a difficult time to deal with that under the current code language that we have. We forwarded to the attorney, the city attorney. Jerry, what's the update on that?
He has talked to the owner's attorney and the owner's attorney was going to talk to the owners this week. Week from now, we should have a better idea whether we're going to, making any progress or not. But it's in the attorney's hands.
The other issue is the trailers up behind the bank. Jerry has been in contact with that individual. He's a businessman in the business of rehabbing trailers, taking parts from one or another, making new ones or restored, whatever you want to call it. Jerry met with him last Friday. He's going to meet with him again this Friday. Gary has agreed to go along and have that discussion with him. I don't know if there's any other update yet on that, Jerry?
That's where it's at. He's been cooperative at this point.
We're, yeah, we're going out there Friday. Zoning administrator myself, I was one of the one objecting to that for some time and council persons, Diane Williams also has been a thorn in her side for a long time. So we're going to go out and I'll listen to what, hear what he has to say and hopefully this can come to some realization or cleanup or whatever. One thing I did note in your notes and I. One thing I did note in your notes, and I can't get these pages numbered, so I fumble around and try to find it again, what I remember about it was, his business is predicated, from what I read here and heard some other testimony from the administrator, on the North Dakota oil fields. Well, we all know what the North Dakota oil fields are doing, and I know what my stock did in it. So, and that's not going to come back for some time. I'm going to look at that issue very, very closely and have a good discussion with him on that, before he convinced, I'm convinced that it's, you know, you're going to predicate, how long are you going to run that out is my concern, so I'll see what the gentleman has to say, I'm looking forward to meeting with him, and I appreciate the opportunity to go. Thank you.
Isn't it problematic that we do not have anything in our ordinances that disallows someone from putting a Finger Hut trailer into their property and leaving it...
Good point.
...there forever?
Well, in my opinion, we do, and Jerry, pretty concisely, the two ordinances which I brought in to the administrator, and Jerry took, Joe took to Jerry, I, certainly I'm not turning, but the way I read this, the public nuisance ordinance, number one, I quote, repose, that offends me there, annoy, it offends me there, Jerry makes note that annoy has to be a health consideration, if I'm, health and safety issues, which I...
It's driving you nuts.
vehemently disagree with, yeah, I'm getting, I have to see my psychiatrist and get some more pills. So I have some exceptions with that, and then the next one down the road, nuisance and the other one.
I guess it makes sense for us to see what the attorneys are going to do.
I agree, let's hear what the guy says, and then we'll...
But in spite of whatever they do, it seems as though we need to address this issue.
Totally.
We need to expand the, maybe the part of the code referring to the pod, and to find a subsection of a pod, being a storage trailer that's got wheels, but it's not a pod, and say that they have the same types of restrictions that a pod does.
And that may or may not be the right place to put it, but we certainly can take a look at that.
Well, maybe under parking, I mean...
Parking is where I'd put it.
I was going to say, that seems sensible.
Well, we don't forget.
No, we're not going to forget. Trying to move this quickly along.
Yeah, accessory structures.
Accessory structures. We had a person here last year, got a conditional use from you folks for a maximum accessory building, on their land use plan, or on their site plan, excuse me, they had a patio, and they decided to put a roof over this patio, so they basically have a roof that's larger than maximum allowable accessory structure size. On one of the drawings, it did show this thing coming out that we all missed, and we contend, well, at least I contend that that's an expansion of the accessory structure, it's not an enclosed building, was something we missed, but we wanted your interpretation as to, how do we deal with these things in the future? Is that a larger accessory structure than what we authorized or not? It's not enclosed, although I suspect it'll probably have screens around it in a year or two. You know, what's your thoughts?
My thought, it is part of the accessory structure. Like I say, it's probably got a slab, it's got a roof on it, pretty soon there's going to be like lots of stuff under it. It's just another, it's just part of the accessory structure without a wall, at least for now.
Yeah, and I use the example of a carport, I mean, the same thing could happen with that. You know, all of a sudden it becomes enclosed, or what have you.
Now he can put that same roof over on his house, and he's okay. And that's what he's got to do.
Well, it's too late now for this particular use, but I think moving forward, I just wanted your interpretation as to how you saw that issue. Any other comments?
I agree, I mean, it's a structure, I mean, it's eventually going to have screens, probably windows later, goes from a screen porch to a three-season, to a four-season, to a...
Bedroom and...
Yeah.
I have a suggestion, but I'll inform, so...
You want to just hold it?
Quickly, Peggy, did you have...
Well, I was just, I was going to say, do we need to rewrite definitions of accessory structure, or what are you thinking is the best approach?
I'm thinking we can probably enforce it, but if we find an opportunity to fix it, and maybe Dave's got a good idea, we can certainly take a look at that. But I did get a consensus from you folks, and so, you know, that's where we're at today. And finally, and we're not going to have this discussion tonight, minimum structure size, the mayor had asked us to make another look, not necessarily at tiny houses, but our minimum house size is 26 by 26, and it was felt that maybe that's a little bit excessive, so we'll put that out on the agenda for next night.
I also think I just read that the legislature was just about to pass one of those portable tiny houses for use for caregiving on property.
Caregiving, you're right.
We're probably going to have to be looking at that at some point.
The last I heard, it got stuck in committee, and there were some problems with it, so I don't think it'll pass, but I don't think it's going to go away either, so, may not happen this year, but it could happen next year, so. All right.
Okay, we moved open forum.
Number two.
David, keep wisdom, David, please.
The oil patch is not where trailers need to go right now. In fact, I'll tell you that cities that are actually passing ordinances, not allowing those kinds of activities in there. As far as the structure thing goes, and I can't remember, I thought it was in Breezy ordinance, but maybe it's not germane to this topic, but I don't think Crow Wing County would. The easy way to do it is, you already say in your ordinance that the things of a house are included in the purpose of the district, so a way to capture roofs or extensions of roofs, I think in Crow Wing County, they say anything over four feet is considered part of the structure. So anytime an eve extends to a certain distance, it now becomes considered part of the structure. So you could, you know, you could call it out, as you know, a normal house might have 24-inch equipment, as much time it exceeds, you come up with a number, 30 inches is it, 36 inches is it, 48 inches, but if that's an easy way to capture, now it becomes a structure when it gets to be too big. That's an easy one. The tree thing, now that I've been able to survey around the world, and not just in deepwater lakes in the region, the, and I'm sure Joe and Jerry have seen this, but, I mean, the tree thing can become a big, become a big deal. I mean, if you're down in Lakeville, Lakefield, or Lakeville, or other places, in Woodbury, different places in the communities, even in the northern suburbs, Anoka, Chaplain, I mean, you actually, if you have a site, you actually have to go to a tree survey and tell me how many trees are on that site that are over, let's say, six inches. And when it's cut, you don't have to necessarily replace the trees on your site, but if, let's say you take down 100 trees, you need to figure out a replacement plan for the trees, and it might be a donation, like a park donation to the city for trees, and they figure out where they go. It might be trees and landscaping on your site to accommodate, but there's some, and I'm not saying that that's the right approach, there's maybe something in between, but there are ways to, that people have used to deal with trees. The thing about it is, it's just like the water topic we have, we are so blessed to have water, whether it has iron in it or not. Think of all the folks in parts of the country and world that wish they had blue.
Detroit.
Same thing with trees, I mean, we lose sight of the fact that trees are part of our landscape, and so we whack off 100 of them, who cares? Because there's 100 of them right over there. But it does change the landscape in that particular location, and how do you compensate for it?
Well, just what highway construction is doing, I mean, it's just remarkable.
Well, I mean, even they put the sewer system to the school, right, and everybody complained about the fact that we needed to plant pine trees along their screen, along the level on our site.